We got. From Monday, August 23rd. All the order. In case you. We have a public order music for the study. We thank you for our many blessings. We thank you for this great country that we live in. We pray, Lord, that you would watch over our precious partners and our service men and women, keep them in a safe play and give us wisdom and discernment, all that we did today, if we ask you to do this. Do you want me to lead us to the side of our country? The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Go call.
Good morning, sir. Commissioner Hill? Commissioner Hannah?
Here.
Commissioner Hannah?
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Franklin? Vice Chairman Cole? Chairman Colwood?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I've got. Public comment. Commissioner, Mr. Ross?
Sure, I just have one question. I've needed it after everybody. Explain why there's a difference between the two separate books?
He says, please explain why the insurance payment paid by Hope's behalf by Worldwide reflected in Worldwide's audited statement for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, and 2020 as a receivable but not indicated on those audited statements for the same years. Okay, we will either respond to that by email or we will give you an answer by the next meeting. That's all I can tell you right now. I could not answer that question.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, very good. Moving around. Okay, we'll talk first. Let's go down. I'm going to rearrange things here. Reynolds Smith. Well, let's talk about the budget first. Because we may have to do that before we do Reynolds Smith and Bill. All right, let's talk about the budget. Everybody should have a copy of the budget that was submitted.
Version three.
Version three. Proposed version three. Hey, go ahead.
Yeah. So it's ready to approve essentially. I mean, there's a few slight changes, but just as we get down to the nitty gritty. So right now, the cost of living increase is running at 5.4%. So rather, this budget includes four, it includes only 4%. So that would, that would increase the income by $3,000. And then we received the insurance bill, which is down in the core operations part, which is $12,065. So we'll be updating the budget to reflect that. But there's no other changes as far as anyone that informed me at this point. Uh, so unless anyone has any comments or discussions, as we talked about, we have enough money in, in the reserves right now to meet our obligations this year for the budgets that we approved for current year and to fund this budget, including the fixed fee, obviously, from the operator and Customs House, which is a, an outgoing expense only. So we have enough money currently to fund this budget as it is. Uh, so, uh, at this point, this is what we know is factual, obviously, and it's ready to go. So.
Okay. All right, who wants to start off the conversation?
Surely I'll start since. Okay, so I have a question about the pilot payment that that's shown as a zero, but should we list something, the news or questions to factor if we expect that we may be paying something, you know, in a settlement? Do we need to list that or how would we budget for like an ongoing settlement?
I don't know that you could budget for it right now. You have any idea where it's going to be?
So likely, so obviously, the two pilot payment, the $50,000 for the last two years remaining that we, or the consensus of the board, or whatever you want to call it, the negotiating position has been are accrued and in the financial statements. So there's a hundred thousand dollar. There's a hundred thousand dollar payable and receivable in the audit and financial statements. Remember, this is, so those, those items were expensed in 2018 and 19 and accrued, obviously, and put into payable. So they sit in your payables right now. This does not reflect payables. This would say, if you, if we put $50,000 in here, that says that we're going to pay $50,000 for the current year. In other words, we're accruing an additional amount to go above the $100,000 that we have sitting in our financials today.
Did we receive the $100,000 for those?
No, we have, we have payables and we have a receivable of $100,000 sitting on our books on the audited financial statements. And in the quarterly, the new review also for the $100,000 to be paid from Worldwide and the $100,000 to be paid out to the city.
So we haven't received the $100,000?
Correct.
Why?
Uh, I think at that point, it was decided that because we were in litigation with the city, that we didn't need the money. Also, all the money would do was sit in our account. Obviously, if we spend that money, as we are right now, potentially going to, you know, if we continue with the legal fees, if we spend that money, there's nowhere else for us to get it. So until we actually need to pay that out, do we need the money sitting in our bank account?
But I thought those two years were not disputed because that was the last two years.
And they're, they're, they're not disputed.
So why have a bigger wait?
We're in litigation with them right now about what anything, is that right? I just, yes, we really might even talk about.
I thought that the last two years were not in dispute or our filings.
Not true.
No.
I think the pilot payments are in dispute.
Yes.
But, but the last two years that were doing operating agreement.
We, we gave, we remediation, we gave them an option about what to do, what we could do, and they refused the option. So it suits, because we're in litigation. So we're not even supposed to be talking about.
Um, so I just, I'm curious why we didn't receive the payment from Worldwide?
We, we didn't, we didn't pay it until we pay it. We don't ask them to pay us back. That's the way that works. We, we pay it, and then we ask them to pay us back, and they've already done it.
So historically, what had happened is we accrued that for the calendar year, right? So the last accrual was in 2019. That payment is not made until July 2020 during the city's budget or whatever year starts, or I'm not sure why, but anyway, the, the payment was made in July 2020 of the following year. We did not receive the payment until July of the year. We did not, we did not collect the payment as we went along. And so because we haven't made the payment to the city, we have not requested the funds from Worldwide.
So does that have reimbursement basis? I thought it was an obligation worldwide if the operator approved to pay that penalty to us.
Not until we bill them for it.
And we, we haven't invoiced them for it?
No, because we haven't paid it. And that's what the lawsuit's on about.
Okay, then my second question was about, because working the way down the budget, I know we brought up additional revenues from the CPI quarterly, which would be a quarterly fee, and then miscellaneous income. Would that include additional revenues? Is that where that would go?
Miscellaneous income is a $2,000 bond fee that we received for being the bond holder per year. That's the, that's the miscellaneous income.
Okay, I think we should have another line for additional revenues because it keeps coming up. Even if it shows a zero, if we keep specifying it, it means that there are additional revenues for labor thing, for other activities, or that it not included in that group. So I think it makes sense for that to be listed as a line item, even if we are still working on what that figure actually is.
It's, it's in the books. It's in the financial books. We just don't put it up. Chief, but we could add it.
Yeah, go ahead. That's fine.
And then down to the commission directions, salaries, again, I think we should pass a budget which reflects the salary that is supported by our, our quarterly fee, the ongoing operation report, as opposed to funding it by the ongoing one-time payments from the state or, what, what are they calling it now? I, I'm losing track of all the different brand acronyms, but the COVID relief funding of $800,000 is a one-time relief payment. I know it can cover salaries. I know that the prying of bond issuance supported these salaries in the past. Again, my position is that we should fund our own salaries and letting officials out of the ongoing operations support. And $1,500 a month was the amount that is supported by the ongoing operation report. If there are additional revenues that support a higher fee, whether that should make more sense to me, the recurring costs should be matched with recurring revenues. Anyone else agree with that or disagree with that?
I disagree. And I, I'll start the vote, but. Whatever y'all have to decide, but I totally disagree with that. We have, you want to comment on that here? We have enough money to support it, but it's from another year.
So we're passing a budget. You know, you have no long term. Obviously, the, the fixed fee for the court will continue to come in as per contract by quarterly installments of the 250 plus inflation, whatever that is going forward. So in that, obviously, is our revenue going forward. We're passing a budget for one year. We don't have any long-term plans beyond that. So if we do not have the funds next year, obviously, we can adjust the budget at that point. At this point, we have the money in the, in the reserve funds to fund the budget as it is.
Commissioner Hannah has a, a comment.
Okay, so Mr. Hannah, go ahead.
Sorry, guys, I, the mute thing. Anyway, I was, I was agreeing with Miriam with the salaries. I mean, I, I've said it in the past about bringing it down at a $1,500 mark. I truly believe the only one really, I, I mean, other than Danny, who's a functioning 24/7 in different roles, but I, I, I agree with Miriam about bringing it down to control the budget the way, the way it stands.
Commissioner Franklin, do you have a comment?
I think we should leave our salaries as they are in 2000. All, we have the budget, the budget, budget for 2022, and all, all the others that we don't take in tax money, we take in all of our budget money from Worldwide. So I think we should leave the budget, the salaries at $2,000.
All right, I'm going to take a vote. We do the roll call, please, on reducing the salaries.
Commissioner Hill?
We're voting to reduce the salaries to $1,500.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Hannah?
I vote yes to reduce the salary.
Commissioner Franklin?
I vote no, reduce the salaries.
Vice Chairman Cole?
I vote no to reduce the salary.
Chairman Colwood?
No. All right, motion fails. The salary will remain the same for another group, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. I'd almost like to make a motion that we stop bringing this up at every meeting. It's not, it's now, it's now been voted on. We don't need to bring it up at every meeting. It's not going to be discussed anymore in the future. Okay, all right, the next thing on the agenda and for the budgets, anything else?
So I have one more point, unless someone else wants to break in.
Yeah, go ahead.
So on the audit, which is the operations, and this kind of deals with some of the public requests we have about reconciling our accounts with Worldwide's accounts since they reference each other. Our, our public statements, our public budget references payables from Worldwide. So we are getting a receivable base of payable. And then they have public documents on Emma that show amounts that don't necessarily match up to items on our budget. I know we're the issuer of a bond with bond and that that may have a situation there, but do we need to budget for a third-party auditor to reconcile the two audits so that they, we understand whether they make sense? Is that our, our obligation as a kind of bond issuer to make sure that?
We are all that you've got.
So the entities are two separate, the state audits. Uh, the only way to reconcile them would be to ask the auditors of the two separate company, uh, which are not, uh, again, I've, I've never seen it done. There could be other factors within Worldwide. Again, the auditors that audit Worldwide stand behind their financial statements that say whatever they say. We have no part of that. If, the only part that we would play potentially is if the auditors decided to send us, and I mean, those are the authority, a verification of any amounts to you, just like you get every down rent free in banking, you get a quiet, you know, do you have this amount of money in the bank? That would be the only participation that we would ever have in an audit. Uh, I don't know, I, I wouldn't think it could be done. And obviously, it's something we have to discuss with the auditors. I've never seen it. I, I don't know that, um, again, and this is a, again, I've never, I've just never seen it. So, and I don't know, reconciling between two separate independent companies, you're comparing apples and oranges. They have their accounting policies and procedures, and we have our accounting policies and procedures. The auditors that audit their books stand behind, the statements are active to their investors and to whoever those go to. We have no part to play in that. And so with reconciliation, I'm not sure what you would do that anyway. Um, there's no formal report that any auditor would ever issue to provide you with any assurance that those records reconcile again. Uh, so.
Would you check around auditors and see if there's anything there and if it possibly be done and report back to us? Otherwise, it's a weak point at the moment. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Right, I've got something that's going on to Customs House. The cleaning service, the people that are presently doing the cleaning service are not getting the job done. And Customs and Border has asked us to do something about that. I have requested another company to come in and look at that. They did. They have given us a much lower bid, well, not much lower, but a lower bid for cleaning Customs House once a week. They started out with twice a week. And. I asked Customs and Border if they would consent to once a week, and he said, yes, that's really all we need. So we're going to do that, and we're going to put that in the budget, and I'll have final figures for you at the next meeting. And we can approve that, but that's, that's where we are with the cleaning service.
Pretty, pretty just of the owners of having complained about the cleaning service. This is the first I've heard about that.
Well, the cleaning service is not showing up to do the job. That's the problem. They haven't been there in three months.
They haven't been there in three months?
No.
Well, they should have notified, they've told us, they have my information there.
Well, they notified me, Carol, and Commissioner Franklin, and, and I, I put out a request for someone else that notified us that they, they had a cleaning service. Um, so we're going to be changing. Because the ones who are there now are not doing the job.
If they have been there two weeks, I'll say they quit. Have we taken away two weeks?
Uh, yes, we have.
Well, they shouldn't have, this proposal shouldn't have. Stop paying them.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, can we approve the budget? Or do you want to wait till the next meeting?
You need to, it needs to be amended. You're going to need a version four, whatever, based on adding a line item. You need to improve from, right, so your final approval will be evaluated. We'll let you bring it up.
And we're on schedule. So obviously, the plan was to perfect it.
Yes, okay, good. We'll do that. All right, very good. So the budget's done. Okay, next thing on the agenda would be the annual audit engagement letter. Here?
So you have, in your package, you have the, uh, the two, two in the letters. One is for the, uh, there's a requirement, obviously, from the Florida Auditor General that the, that the investment accounts, what we invest our funds in, the audit, and so the first letter, uh, is, that's section 218. For 15 of the Florida statutes, there's a whole engagement letter just about that. And again, that's required by, by Florida statute, and so, um, there's no additional fee for that. It's included in the audit fee. Uh, and then the second letter is the standard engagement letter that we sign each year. It's essentially, uh, all the same terms and conditions of a, this is the normal audit engagement letter. So I didn't see any, there's nothing unusual or outstanding or different from any previous years. It's, you know, it's lengthy, it's seven pages. Uh, but it's essentially more, you know, kind of a standard terms and conditions of audit and what, what their work does and what, what it does not do, obviously. Uh, uh, so, and obviously, the fee is found on page, say, page eight. So the fee is $25,800. Uh, they'll be here in November to do the audit. Uh, there will also be, there's also on page eight is the, uh, the additional, potentially an additional fee for, um, of $4,000 for each of the federal and state programs that, so obviously, you have the cranes, uh, this year, um, and, um, the warehouse. And the docks, I think. Uh, so there's at least three programs that will need the audit. Several, those are essentially, we call the yellow book audit, which just essentially says that the terms of the grant were followed. That's required by, uh, the federal grant, but because we receive, uh, federal grants, um, in amount above a certain amount, those have to be audited, and they have to be audited individually. So the spam is audited. And so there's an additional fee for that. Uh, in past years, that fee has been paid by the operator. So that's why it's not included in the budget, because those, those are specifically with those grants. So we just need to approve and sign these and return them to the auditor to say so we can get on their schedule for November, uh, to get the audited financials for the, this is for the year ended September 30th, 2021.
I don't see the engagement letter. Engagement letter on yours, then?
Yes, sir.
It's right. So there's two letters. The first one for Malton Jenkins is three pages long, and the second one is eight pages long.
That was in fact, sure.
Yes. And that was the last one's package, and I think it was in the, this special meeting package. Like I said, both letters are, one right after the other. The first one's three pages.
Is this the last year of our contract with him?
Uh, I will have to look. I'm not sure. I think we had a three-year agreement.
I'll see, I'll see. All right.
Were you dating the auditor before that three-year period? Was it renewal or?
Uh, no, before that was the, uh, was the auditor, we're on, we're on terminal. Car rig anger. Was, uh, which had been, uh, we took over the firm that was doing, so we had the same auditor for about what year before that. Uh, and they took over the firm out of Jacksonville, I'm sorry, out of Gainesville, but that was taken over like Carriker's been through, but.
How quickly you shouldn't change auditors?
Uh, there's no, there's no specific requirement to change.
I'm trying to really do the service with them, being able to, you know, hopefully, maybe I have a question more than Sarah's, but it's time.
And, and the only reason is we were switched away from Carriker because we weren't in state level circuits. So we were having trouble getting on the schedule. They were showing up late. We were, we were turning in the odd way. Uh, you know, Car, uh, modern Jenkins, the auditors now, they're coming in November. It's done essentially by January, February, the audit is done, uh, whereas, uh, Carriker's and Ingram used to take, and a lot of it was because, again, they'd just been acquired by a large firm. There's lots of changes going on. And so, you know, at that point, I'm sure you get great service now. But yeah, we were, we felt a little neglected by that, and so we've got Paul Jenkins, yes.
And we had that out for bid when we did that.
Yep.
And they were the lowest price and gave us the best deal, best service, and we've been very happy with it, but not honestly any reason to change this year, which is everything on the contract. But then next year, we'll look at that.
Uh, I'll just say, you need to have an auditor placed by September 30th, which means that if you want to have a bidding process, you want to open it up for bidding, you know, open it up for request, you have to start in February, March.
Yeah.
So just, you know, we'll look and see if this is the last year for the Walton Jenkins contract.
Almost, it is, but.
Well, somebody, I'm thinking maybe five years, uh, but with two-year renewal, two, two renewal options, but for some reason, I have that in mind, that, that may be someone else. Uh, so I'll have to look and see, but, um, but obviously, if we, if we want to do that, just realize, like I said, there is a, a, a little bit of a cumbersome process that we have to start in, in, um, February, March at the latest.
Okay. Keep reminding us of that. All right, any other questions about that? All right, all in favor of renewing the, or signing the engagement letter? Yeah. Say about the same night?
Aye.
All opposed? My pleasure, Karen. Get that done. Okay, memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the city apartment in the beach on the sewer line. Patrick, can we discuss this right before, we've added it to the, to this particular special meeting of the city of projects. It's supposed to get started at the beginning of September. So, uh, this is for them to replace this real line running into the port. Um, the agreement is that we will let them do work and pay for it, which is going to be over $700 estimated. And then, uh, Hope will acknowledge the abandonment of the North Country right away, although they did actually some time ago. Um, we will have the sewer line re-inspected by an engineer of our own hiring and, um, will be responsible for it going forward. So no real term changed from what we discussed a couple of times. This is just for you to approve the MOU, and we'll get it signed by the chairman of my self, and then give it to, uh, the city to then sign, you know, get started. Any questions about the memorandum?
Did they submit our changes?
Yes.
Yeah, we had some minor changes regarding some of the identity, other things, and their work stuff, well, to Danny Buck, so there were, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't sign this.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Scott?
He's nodding his head.
I'm trying, aye, aye. Sorry, guys, it wasn't unmuted.
Alright, all those, no? Alright, motion carries, alright, we'll do that. Alright, now, FSTAD grant, G O L O six. Chris, you want to speak about that for a second?
Sure. We have been reviewing this, uh, grant with the FDOT and our engineers, and we developed a plan rather than rushing to, uh, expend this by the end of the year when it expires, uh, FDOT's agreeable that we, uh, request from FSTAD to transfer the remaining balance. We have about seventy-five thousand dollars in billing against this grant, which right now sits at one hundred ninety-five thousand four oh two. Uh, so we're, uh, going to close out any invoicing, uh, against this grant as it sits by September thirtieth and request that the balance be transferred to G nineteen thirty-eight. G nineteen thirty-eight has a similar scope, which relates to theater rehab and maintenance dredging. And it still has three years to go. And from our work on this branch and reviewing it, this brand was inherited from Plinter Morgan, requested by us. So we did some exploratory work and we did a big process to see what the cost of repairs would be. And it came out that it was not a feasible scope of work and not a feasible cost as well over a million dollars. And it wasn't supposed to be that. So if you look at the scope of G O L O six, it relates to the dock, the red box. So the logical, uh, adjustment project, scope of G O L X, G O L O six, design procurement rehabilitation of North Dock Grant, North Dock, ramp and pilings as needed on the existing twelve-hundred-foot Lydia Street Dock and Port Farm. So it really was always planned to work together with nineteen thirty-eight, and we decided that, uh, it's more efficient to combine the projects. We will be building some design work, as I said, against it of approximately seventy-five thousand dollars left over from Tran Systems. And, um, I will be prepared, be pleased to draft a letter for Vice Chairman Cole uh, on OPA letterhead for him to sign, or the chairman to sign and carry it and present it at the FSTAD meeting in Panama City. And I've also spoken to Mike Rubin, and he assures me that, that he would be pleased to present it, and he doesn't expect an opposition.
Well, he's leaving tomorrow, so.
Okay, yeah, we'll send it to him this afternoon. I could even put it on OPA's letterhead, and then you can just print that out and sign it. Now, I'll copy, copy chairman of the board, if anybody else wants to see it.
Yeah, and I'm meeting with FDOT the other day, they were going to check to make sure this can be transferred to another.
Right, but I spoke to them this morning, Kyle Kaufman and Justin Ryan, and they agree it's not a problem. In fact, they, they support it.
Alright, very good. Okay, let's move on to the Ronald Smith and Hill scope of work. John? Good afternoon. Talked about that for a minute. What we've done is, uh, we're going to use the I've called COVID relief bond, there's one I'm aiming for. To, if we need to supplement that particular grant with those bonds, we can do that. It's already been approved. Oh, we've already got permission, we can do that. Okay. Patrick, do you have any information on this about that grant at this time?
I don't have anything new from submitting the resolutions to them. I know that there was a disinformation session at our meeting, um, so I'm having to reach out to them on timing, because I think at the staff level, it's not entirely in their control, so when everything gets approved, then, but they were expecting it to be pretty quick.
And do we have anything we need to send them asking for money for particular items? Including in that grant?
No, I think it, it works like a traditional where you would seek funding. It's my recollection from the conversation with them, it's kind of split up between items you've already spent money on, uh, from, I think, March going forward, and then items you're going to spend money on. So you just have to provide them either reimbursement documentation or, you know, invoices presented, you expect to happen.
And this money will be for the grant, this particular grant will be in next year's budget. We'll put it back in next year's budget. And kept the levels at the same before we had them reduce everything. Because we need, there's public workshops in there. So I think everybody's agreed with that. We wanted that put back in, so it raises the cost of it back up to the original cost they told me.
So, yeah. As Patrick said, so this is a traditional grant, works like every other FDOT grant, which means that you have to spend the money and then submit receipts and things for reimbursement. We can go back to spending from March third. So, uh, obviously, and, and the idea here is, this is the economic recovery. And so to spend it, and so it's, it's back to March third and ninety days forward. There are reporting requirements in this grant, and there are narrative requirements that need to be reported, so not sure who is going to prepare the narratives with regards to the funds being submitted for reimbursement. But obviously, we can easily gather the receipts. Uh, once we have the funds, we can use those to pay additional funds if we need to, obviously, so, uh, uh, but someone's going to have to write the narrative as to, again, this grant is specifically for response to the negative economic impacts of the COVID nineteen public debt emergency by state life and subrecipient and provide working capital to lay the foundation for strong economic recovery. So someone has to write a narrative to that effect of how this spending drives that, drives home that point.
Why would we use that funding for a local match when a local match is committed by Worldwide for the Strategic Master Plan, which relates to the Fort of Fernandina?
Well, the local match was, was agreed to, to a certain point. There's, there's a FDOT match and a local match. And we, these, um, um, grant was submitted or came back to us at seventy, eighty thousand dollars over the local match, Chris?
Uh, the lo, the local match, the grand, the grand was one eighteen on the fifty, that's max, but Worldwide is not committed to the funding of the share.
I thought you were there one time.
Uh, well, we're not committed to it, and in fact, uh, we can't use bond capital improvement money since determined for a business study or a business plan. So I think they're on the right track with the global belief. So we got to do the whole one nine match. So we have one eighteen, depending on the pricing negotiated, then you, you have to match the one eighteen at least, but if you have to go higher, then you might have to put some additional in.
Would you like to do the match? Was that?
I thought you said you'd do that. Well, we talked about the possibility of it, but we haven't, there's no paperwork yet on the, uh, on the management.
To the Strategic Master Plan and chief funds or any other federal grants, like we have to have this plan done, and that you know, looking at, looking at the CSET grant, looking in CSET, the grant application that was submitted by Mr. Ruchy includes the scope of work and involve applications of our state in lieu of our Strategic Master Plan requiring exhibit to be attached. I've read this, so that he could it. Days.
And furthermore, I don't know what's so extraordinary, we may define furthermore, the statement that none of these grants will roll without an update is patiently false, it's incorrect.
We applied for this grant for the master plan.
Well, your previous board director actually applied for this, about two and a half years ago. You had this, uh, I mean, it just happened to have the grant information, I'll leave you the date. This grant was approved, it's at least three cycles ago. We gave up trying to push it and move it forward, because at this point, it's really OPA's ball. We were hoping to get it done in the spring, if you remember, we were pitching it back in February, March.
I'd like to make a motion to request that Mr. Franchowski prepare a demand letter, um, that the matching might be provided, given that in alliance on Mr. Ruchy's comments at public meetings and support this application, and in consideration of this work on this application, we draft new documents on this application and this response to uh, requests for qualifications that we demand payment of that local match that was committed multiple times by Worldwide.
Okay, there's been a motion to ask Worldwide to pay for the the local share of the grant for the master plan in discussion.
Uh, I'll, I'm, I'm with Miriam, I, I thought Chris was covering the local grant. That's why we tried to pull back some of the costs. So we kept it at a certain limit that they wanted to cover, but now they're saying they're not covering any of it? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what we're hearing.
Yeah, that's, that definitely isn't what was discussed at the meetings, Chris. I mean, we can go back to the minutes and pull it out and pull it into the next meeting, but you definitely said you were covering the local grant, over and over, bud.
I have a sheet here that says master plan, master plan inactivity has been ten months. Yeah, there's a grant portfolio age profile, and one of the reports that we get, Jim Ford, is going on two years since it was actually signed. It was approved within three years ago, and by the time the grant gets, the grant getting, you get signed. So there it is, that's what it is.
I've, I've actually asked multiple times whenever we discuss grants, that we get some type of commitment for the local match for this exact reason. Because we engage with third-party contractors who spend a significant amount of time um, in alliance on our, our F U, which I know that we don't have a legal obligation to award at all. I understand that we get the whole process and we get awards to no one. But it's, it's so disingenuous on our part to do that when, you know, the reason that we're not going to proceed is because we aren't, because of an issue like this. So I think we should have a practice of getting commitment, otherwise we can't plan. Um, and we're not going to get bids in the future when we try to go through this process if, if the bidder knows that ultimately either their work won't be approved or the bill won't be made.
You're bending Patrick?
We've done a motion on the force, and really did, it's going to be amongst, amongst yourselves. Yeah, I, I haven't, I haven't looked at this particular issue. I recall discussion about, um, payment of the, the local match, but I have to look at the minutes, and I'm, I'm happy to do whatever you're asking me to do.
You want to wait and go back to the minutes, make sure we're staying on front of ground?
Yeah, I would like to ask Patrick to prepare the letter.
So I would just, you know, in, in, uh, Worldwide's defense, not to, again, is that they have matched three and a half million dollars. Already, you've acquired seven million dollars of equipment in the last three years, of which three and a half million dollars has been funded directly to the Ocean High Authority for more of a lot.
We have twenty-one million dollars with the private balance that's been issued. We have what, eight million dollars worth of federal state grant money that's made, do not.
That's a wrong figure. It's less than four million outside.
I, I, I'm real, uh, no, no, I, I want to table this, and we have a motion on the board. A motion, either. There's a motion on forward, ask Patrick to, um, what was it?
I was requesting that he just write a demand letter, which is a letter stating that Ocean High Authority is demanding payment of the local match. And, and again, the warmer thing, well, since we're in the discussion phase of this, when we were discussing the scope of work, we had several points within the project, as you'll recall, that were just for OPA. So the West Side of Nassau, Crawford Diamond projects that would really be OPA's strategic master plan. And Mr. Ruchy said he would not support any award that was for a Crawford Diamond project that would, would connect Crawford Diamond to Jacksport, that he would only support a scope of work that was for the
For the port, absolutely, yep.
Yeah.
I just want to remind you all that.
Absolutely. When we made amends that we would take things out because Chris was having a bird about covering other things. It was a hundred percent what we discussed. So we definitely need to go through the minutes, Chris, because it, it was one hundred percent put out that way, that you would only cover if we kept it mainly regulated to the port. And that's what was agreed upon.
Look, this is your master plan, and so you're adjusting the scope as you see fit. We only gave our opinion as to what it should cover. But the bottom line is, there's no issue here, since the COVID relief money clearly is available for local matches against state grants. You've got eight hundred and six thousand to work with. Whatever you decide to spend on your, uh, master plan update, which is again essentially a voluntary update, not legally required at this time, we would encourage you to just put all those things back in the master plan, and you have funding to pay for. So I don't see what the big issue would be.
Mr. Franklin, you have any comment?
Uh, well, several months ago, Chris said the World Bank that do all the batches of our grants, all the rest, he didn't, all of them, they were any of the balance, you know? And I should, he should be, World Bank should be obligated to patch all our grants.
Alright, well, we'll, uh, we'll vote on this motion and ask Patrick to do that if it passes, and, uh, Worldwide can respond to that. And whatever manner they, they choose. So all in favor, signify the same aye?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead. Are you going to research?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, signify the same aye?
Aye.
All those, no? Motion carries. Alright? Alright, um.
So before we leave?
Yes.
We're ready to leave that topic. Obviously, what we were talking about was the ARPA grant, the A R P A, eight hundred and six thousand dollars.
Yes.
And how we're going to spend that money.
Yes.
And who. So, um, see, even if we take all the cost of the Ocean High Authority, as it occurred from March third and ninety days forward, that will equal approximately two hundred thousand dollars. The ARPA grant needs to be spent. It cannot be reserved, it cannot stay in the account for, uh, uh, again, there's no the grant, the grant sheet does not specify, but obviously there's ninety-day reports due on progress, on moving forward. Uh, so obviously, again, this money needs, or we'll go back to the state.
Does this, does this money have to be spent all in that eight, is it eight months?
It does not need to be so, so the, the, the grant allows you to go back to March third to claim all costs from March third going forward. And that allows you to claim ninety days of, of costs going forward. Okay, and asks you to, this is the point I was making, they ask you to define what the economic recovery, the, the purpose of the grant, and how, what you're doing helps propel them. Okay, uh, again, money cannot be put in reserve, that's very specific in there, it can be used for state matching grants. Again, money cannot be put in reserve. That's very specific in there. It can be used for state matching grants. It can't be used for federal matching grant. So, but even if we use it for, again, for the Ocean High Authority, unless we have projects ready to go to be spent to, again, to speed up the economic recovery. So I need some guidance from the board of how you're going to spend that money. We have $800,000 sitting in the bank that we could have, yes. What are we going to spend it on?
One of the things we keep talking about is not having the funding for a port director, someone who is our CEO.
I agree.
And I would be happy to write up the verbiage to give with Rosanna. And the two of us could prepare, you know, craft the verbiage and then present it at the next meeting for the board.
So I'll just say to that, obviously, there's no guarantee that the money will be available. It does require quarterly, the, the sheets have put out, and I need to read it a little bit more carefully if you want, because I did think about port director, obviously. The problem is obviously that there's no guarantee that the money will stay there, that, you know, what, in other words, again, yes, you, could you craft something? But again, this money is not supposed to be put in reserves, which means that in theory, no, you cannot reserve a, you know, a port director's salary for a year ahead or whatever. Again, my reading, we need to read it more carefully if that's your intention to do that. So these are projects to be put in the ground or whatever, or again, and going back to assist the economic recovery. Again, I, that's just, that's what the grant said. Again, we need to prepare narratives how our spending is going to drive that. As I said, putting in, it specifically, this allows creation of reserves, which means that we cannot take, by my definition of that, that means that we cannot take $200,000 and put it into a salary for two years from now. Yes, could you fund six months of a port, of a port director's salary? Yes. Could you fund two years' worth? I don't believe so. Again, that's my simple reading of the grant right now.
We need to find out more information because I, I don't think, I don't agree.
With what?
With what you just said.
Okay.
But then, you know, that, but we'll have to look at, I'll have to read more of that.
Okay.
There's, there's still a lot of, even when you talk, if, if, they, they could, they could tell exactly what the parameters are. So.
Yeah, I, I asked them a few questions and they had to get, get back to me. I recall them saying that salaries for OPA employees or OPA related services, that would be
Right.
Peter's fees, Mike's fees, Connor's fees, Brittany's salary, yours. They did not think paying salaries or bonuses or anything to Worldwide employees qualified because they're not eligible for OPA. We talked about the master plan, those type of things, but I would just encourage you to go back to them. Because when I asked them a couple of different questions, they survived. We got back to you last week. And they did. They got back to me pretty quick, but and I'm happy to help with any narratives that need to be written. I'm sure that they will also help us with that.
So.
I've got those rules right here and I've, I've read them several times.
Well, and so obviously, the, to apply for that, so the question is who's going to apply for reimbursement and when? Obviously, along with that, needs to go a reported requesting funds and plans for fun. So I need direction on for, if Patrick's going to use that fund, but if I need direction, if you want of what you're saying. If you're telling me, yes, the grant allows, we can hire a port director, we can, two years from now, spend from this money, we'll put that in the plan. Okay? But, so I just need direction on, you know, what you want those financials to look like. As I said, it's, we know definitively we spent from March 3rd to now, how much we spent, and we know what we'll spend the next 90 days.
Let me read this. So how much can we invoice? First invoice, up to 50% of the allocated amount. Cost incurred from March 3rd, 2021 through the date of spending plan transmitted. Costs for 90 days working capital measured from date of spending plan transmitted. Costs included in approved spending plan. Subsequent invoices, if 90-day spending plan is achieved, up to 50%. Any cost that exceeds the approved 90-day spending plan amount of the cost for 90 days working capital measured from date of spending plan transmitted. Subsequent invoices, if the 90-day spending plan is not achieved, cost reimbursement for eligible costs. That's the only direction it gives.
So all those reimbursements, you can, you can invoice up to 50% of the grant, which is $400,000. You have to support that reimbursement with actual payments. Your expenses over that period will be $150,000 at most. So you cannot get the rest of the money for the grant. That 300, that $250,000, you do not have receipts to show we hit that. You could, yes, you could invoice up to 50% of the grant, absolutely. We do not have $400,000 receipts of spending for the last six months or since March 3rd. And we will not even hiring a port director.
Yeah, I don't think you have to use all of it in 90 days. I just don't read it that way. I could be wrong.
I think, yeah.
Sorry about these things, I am, but I just don't.
I, I don't think you have to use it in 90 days from now. I don't even know that you have to use it in 180 days from now.
Yeah.
But I don't know that you can use it a year and a half from now.
Well, that's what we need to find out now.
Okay, so I think, yes, if you have plans in place and they're moving forward and you're spending, yes. I, I would disagree that you can use it 18 months to 24 months from now to fund operations.
Well, and I think it's probably good for us to have an attitude of coming up with ideas for, you know, where we should spend it and bringing those back to me, maybe along with some of the, you know, start of the verbiage. And we should, I mean, we've always had an issue with cash constraints, right? And everything we've tried to do from internships to customs house, everything we've tried to do, we always seem to have a cash constraint. So if we try to look forward with those same needs, and that, I know we've talked about the intern issue and that's a very small piece. But those would be the types of things, or if there's a training program for college students, if there's some sort of outreach, if there's something with the customs house, like having administrative office there.
And you're right, I, I have no idea. So something, leaving in the port director, let's, let's look at the port director. Okay, putting in RFP out, getting a, you know, how long do you think it's going to take to hire that port director? Let's say three months to have someone in place. So you put that into your 90-day spending plan, that that's your plan. Again, how, how long do you, you have to report every 90 days that you continue to spend those funds? Fine, how long can that go on? The grant is not clear, I'll give you that. Okay? But the grant is about speeding economic recovery. So I, I don't know that, you know, because even customs house or internships, again, these are not things that we have in place. These are not things that, these are things that to get going, to get these, you know, to get an intern in here, again. And, and no, the grant does not specify how they're going to approve or disapprove or what they're going to allow after the 90-day period. They do require 90-day reporting of them. That's a, that's for sure.
All right. I also have one of the pages in this packet that says reporting. Some recipients will have to report how program funds are used to respond to negative economic impacts and lay the foundation for strong and equitable recovery. Table eight, table 12, quarterly report periods and new dates. It goes, report one, grant start date to 9/30. It has a new date, it's 10/15. Goes all the way down to report 14 dated 20/24.
I see. I saw that, yes.
Fourth quarter. And that doesn't have to be reported until 1/15/2025. So we can use, we can do these covered periods for whatever we need. And then subsequently, do whatever other things we need, like next year's budget. We'll have money left over that we can obtain from them.
So there's two.
We don't have to have it in an account somewhere for us.
Right.
But we just have to show them where we're going to spend it, what we're going to spend it on.
So if you flip to several pages back, right? The first line says, you cannot use this to fund reserve.
To fund reserve.
That's what, that's why, I understand, I understand. That's, that's the, those two, those two things are inconsistent here.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I understand. I saw the chart. I agree. It goes to 2024. Can you fund your, what's it, 3/20/24? But on the other side, it says you cannot use this to fund reserve. How are those two?
How does that conflict with each other?
Those two, as far as the account, are, are somewhat incompatible, right?
Yeah.
If I hire someone and I say, I'm going to use this for a salary for the next 24, 36 months, uh, have I said?
We have to get from budget to budget. We have to get from budget to budget for the next.
No, the accounts are not going to look at it. So the auditor is not going to look at it that way. If you tell the auditor that you hired a, a port director, you used this grant once for 36 months, they're going to put 36 months into a reserve account. That's how you're funding it. That's, I mean, that's the incompatibility of these two. I, I can't answer you. I've read the documents you sent me. I've read the actual grant.
They're very confusing, but.
I would just say, we need to.
I'm hoping that when he goes to the meeting for EFTAD and Foreign Force Council, they'll be able to answer some of these questions.
I, I, I will say, to avoid trouble, spend sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Yeah. The longer it's tracked, the more questions there are.
We hired a port director, use some of these funds for the port director for this year. And then next year, we come back and say, you know, we need more money for the port director this coming year. And we should be able to get that according to what I'm reading. Correct? You don't know?
I, that's, again, you're, you're hiring a new head count. I, those, that, those two statements, as I just said, are incompatible. You're setting up a reserve as far as I'm concerned for that salary.
But you don't want your contract each year?
Yeah, but then there's no guarantee that the money will be there next year.
Well, then we'll, we'll fire him.
Right, well, yeah, and that's fine. There's no, what I'm telling you is that without setting up a reserve, there's no guarantee that money will be there. They're compared to that grant will be there. They were, they're requiring reporting, but again, will they come down and say, this, this, this grant is over? You haven't spent it. We're going to suck it back into the.
Okay, well, that's something we need to find out.
I think that team is in a spot.
I'm going to stop talking now.
What percentage do you grant administrators usually get? Do grant administrators work on a percentage?
What would you, what would we need a grant administrator for?
Well, it seems like that would be helpful for both, you know, trying to advance and for this and for MERA and just for all these various things we do. I guess the kind of.
Oh, you're talking about the kind of grant administrator.
We have a trustee.
So I'm not sure what you mean by trying to with.
Let's take that one out because we have a trustee, so.
And, and again, the, the Ocean High Report Board has no responsibility whatsoever.
Let's take that one out. Let's talk about MERA grant, or let's talk about these other grants that we apply for. And when you said we need verbiage, that's the type of thing that the branch administrator will do. And then also, you know, certified compliance with the grant for time will help us make sure that we space compliance.
So only one organization have, I, so I'll just throw out, so it was 60% of the amount for the grant. Because you're talking about hiring somebody out of contract.
Right.
Because we don't have a salary to pay that person. We don't have enough grants to fund their job profile. Again, that was several years ago. That was one organization here in Chappell, that I know hired a grant administrator. That was the cost at that point. But it's finding somebody right now will be the challenge, will be finding someone to do that. I, I, you know, obviously, we need to take advantage of this money. We received the, you know, this is the economic recovery funds have been made available to us, you know, from the, because of this whole COVID situation. So how do we best take advantage of that? How do we make sure we receive the full, we have $800,000 available for us? There's no doubt about it. How do we make sure we receive that full value, that we capture the value of this grant? Obviously, that we spend it smartly.
All right, any other questions about that? All right, do we need to hear from Ralph Smith and Hill at this point? Or we just going to put this back in our budget? And request the funds for that? From the relief funds?
So abs, absolutely. So the relief, the funds do allow, and again, at this point, we have plenty of relief funds. So yes, they allow for funding of matching state, matching grants. So you can use the relief funds for that purpose, absolutely. And they.
We end up needing to, to do that and we have.
...that's already been committed by the third party. And if, if we budget for it and we expend it, is there any incentive for Worldwide to pay that match once they've received their strategic master? The grants that they can now use to attach to the transit.
Well, we don't have to approve any of this, right? We have to. Put this in our budget and say, if, if Worldwide or Worldwide was not support that and they, they're not made to pay that, whatever Patrick finds out, you know, we're, we're going to have to move forward with that or, or not do a, a master plan at all.
The strategic plan really benefits just the board and part of you, which we do.
No, the, the one that they develop is going to benefit OPA and the rest of the county. It's not just the port. And even if the port operator were not there, whoever runs that port is going to benefit from that, yes. The port is going to benefit from it.
For example, like the Crawford Diamond projects, those require doubt.
No, they're going to be built back in.
Yeah, we should put all that stuff back in, guys. Not for nothing.
Is that, is that right? Justin?
That would be include the full, the original, the original scope.
Right, the original scope of work.
And the impact of the price as well, right?
Yeah, that's what, that's what they're talking about.
So now it's further increasing.
No, well, back to the original.
Yeah, the original price.
I mean, we, we took out some items to bring it down. We just put it back down.
So can we make sure all that stuff's in there with the Crawford Diamond and the West Side and everything?
Yes.
Yeah, and then I.
We're going to approve, well, hopefully, we're going to approve scope of work tonight, today. We can do that, right? Yeah. Any other questions?
Well, I want to support doing that because I think that that, I think that that shifts the incentives. So how do you simultaneously say we can payment, but we're also.
They're not going to, they're not going to pay. It's, what are we, we doing here?
We don't have to pay everything right, right away. Is that correct? Justin, would you explain how all this, this payment deal will work? It's only incremental, right, as you do the work?
Right, we invoice on a monthly basis.
Right.
The work, lead it for that month. We use our standard buying agreement, so with 30, 30-day payment terms. We'll, at the end of the month of the work, we'll need to have 30 days to pay that.
So Patrick's going to let us know by next meeting. So we think we got to go one way or the other here. We've got to put it in our budget to fund that in case we can't get Worldwide to pay it. Otherwise, we don't do one.
We all walked into this meeting today not, not intending to fund this match.
No, we didn't either. No. No, we talked about that at the last meeting. They were there at the last meeting. We talked about putting everything back in the budget because we have the funds to pay for it. We need it. That's exactly what we talked about at the last meeting. That's why they're here, to approve the scope of work. All right. Where are we going? What's next? Where we going here? What's next? All right, so what we need to do is approve the Ralph Smith and Hill scope of work. Any discussion about that? Let's get a motion. Somebody? We make a motion that we will live their scope of work. Got a motion to approve the scope of work for Ralph Smith and Hill. Any discussion, further discussion?
I guess my 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 question is, is that we're definitely all on the same page that all the stuff we had talked about in the beginning with the West Side and all the Crawford Diamond and everything, we're we're going to be putting this all back in, right? This is going to be the big, the big budget item is going to be with everything that we had originally voiced that we wanted. So we're going to go with getting the grant money to cover this whole thing as a as a whole.
That's correct.
Correct, okay. I I second that motion. As long as we're covering everything as a whole. I don't want to leave anything out that we as a party decided that we thought were important. We pulled stuff out to work with Chris, and now he's backing out, so.
Because we talked about it last meeting about community involvement. We definitely want the community involved. And having those meetings is important.
I agree. I think we should have the community involved, West Side. Yeah, let's get it all back in then. Okay, I'm I'm in for that then.
That's correct, isn't it?
Right, and I described Amanda's part of your motion. You differentiated that it's the June seventeen scope of work, telling the original, that we changed the date for the updated. So if you want to go back to the original, I would just make sure you differentiate.
You want to amend, amend this? I'll amend that motion that we go back to All right, motion been made that we go back to the original scope of work that was put forth on June seventeen. Any further discussion?
I will second that.
Okay, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
All opposed? No. You said no?
I said no.
All right, motion passes. It's done. Thank you, guys.
If I can, I if you
Stand up, Justin.
And Justin Bollard say, if you like, I can clean this up and get, you know, the final version. Don't change anything. Let's make it clean. Um, Cindy, we have a fine agreement. You got to send Patrick to review.
Um, yes.
And that's going to be the next step.
Okay.
You got to give that and sign it, then we would get work.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else to come before this budget meeting? And no, the meeting is adjourned.
Bye, guys.
See you. Thank you.
Stay safe.